Good afternoon and welcome to the National Capital Planning Commission's June 2, 2011 meeting. If you would all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a quorum, so I'll call the meeting to order, and without objection, we'll proceed along the agenda that's been previously advertised as our order of business. I will note that we're sitting in for Mr. Preventia today is Sajil Ahmed. Welcome, representing the Department of Defense. Agenda item number one is report of the chairman, and the dog days of summer have arrived, and your chairman has no report, nothing of significance to report. So we'll go straight to the agenda item number two, which is the executive director's report, Mr. Costa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon. I just have a few items I'd like to report on today. First of all, NCPC's next speaker series event, Contemporary Design Historic City, The Balancing Act Between Innovation and Preservation, will be held on Tuesday, June 7, at 6:30 p.m. This public panel discussion will explore how Washington can preserve its architectural heritage and welcome new innovative design into its urban fabric. This event will take place at the Catholic University School of Architecture and Planning and is being held in partnership with the American Institute of Architects, D.C. Chapter. Details about the event are available on our website. I'd also like to introduce three college students who began their summer internships with NCPC. First of all, we have Kelly Wagner. Kelly is a rising junior at the University of Virginia, participating in their science and technology policy internship program. Kimberly Sparling. Kimberly is a rising senior at MIT. She is pursuing a degree in civil and environmental engineering and urban studies and planning and is part of the MIT/Washington intern program this year. And finally, we have David Foster. David is a rising senior pursuing a degree in landscape architecture from West Virginia University, and welcome to all of them. Finally, I'd like to ask Bill Dowd, our Director of Physical Planning, to come to the podium. He will brief you on the status of our design competition at President's Park South. Bill?
Thank you, Marcel. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. This afternoon, I'm here to provide you a brief update on NCPC's effort to improve the balance of physical security and access to the important public spaces in our capital city. NCPC and the interagency Security Task Force have spent the last 10 years working with partner agencies to develop guidance and make improvements in this area. In addition to specific planning recommendations and policies, we also initiated the design effort that resulted in the improvements to Pennsylvania Avenue on the north side of the White House in 2005. After September 11, 2001, for security reasons, E Street was closed to unauthorized traffic with temporary barriers and guard booths. Since that time, the threat environment and the related security concerns for the White House have not changed, and nearly 10 years later, these temporary security features are still in place today. The closure of E Street, along with Pennsylvania Avenue, has impacted crosstown traffic for cars, pedestrians, and bicyclists, and has transformed this part of President's Park South into an unwelcoming space filled with Jersey barriers and temporary guard booths. In response to the closures of Pennsylvania Avenue and E Street, Congress appropriated $5 million to Federal Highway Administration in 2003 to study the congestion and mobility impacts caused by the closure of E Street, Pennsylvania Avenue, and identify engineering solutions to mitigate those impacts. FHWA actively consulted with NCPC, the Secret Service, the National Park Service, and the city on the White House Area Transportation Study, which measured the impacts of the street closures and evaluated potential value of possible solutions. FHWA also made periodic information presentations to the commission, including a presentation of the draft findings last October. The study evaluated the potential benefits and the cost-effectiveness of constructing a range of different tunnels along the E Street alignment. These alternatives had the potential to mitigate some of the traffic impacts but had very high capital and non-capital costs associated with them. The study evaluated the potential effectiveness of transit system enhancements, such as increasing D.C. circulator service and constructing a transitway along K Street. These alternatives have the potential to provide some transit benefits but could have negative impacts to overall congestion levels. And the White House Area Transportation Study also looked to identify transportation operation improvements that could mitigate the closure impacts. With reconstruction of four complex intersections and reorientation of traffic flow around the downtown core, this approach could result in benefits to both auto and transit travelers. FHWA presented their draft findings from this study to the commission last October, and the final report from the study is expected to be released very soon. Since that study is focused almost exclusively on traffic impacts and solutions, NCPC initiated discussions with the Park Service and the Secret Service to address and mitigate impacts that were caused to the appearance and use of President's Parks South. In 2008, NCPC's interagency Security Task Force concluded that based on the threat environment and the relationship of E Street to the White House grounds, the traffic could not be restored to E Street as it exists today, and that, modeling after the process that successfully transformed Pennsylvania Avenue from an unwelcoming security zone into an inviting public space north of the White House, that NCPC should lead a design competition to generate creative solutions to the problem at hand. These design concepts would then be used by the Park Service and the Secret Service in their joint efforts to implement appropriate site improvements. So to initiate this process, the Park Service and Secret Service initiated a joint NEPA process where the Secret Service will decide, one, whether to permanently close specific areas to unauthorized traffic, and, two, whether to replace the temporary unsightly security elements that are currently in this area with adorable, more aesthetic security elements. And the Park Service will decide on landscape and infrastructure changes to the area that respond to the proposed street closures and redesign of security elements to ensure that the iconic historic nature of the landscape that is the White House and its environs and an important destination for visitors. This, of course, is only the first step in a detailed and publicly open process to evaluate a range of alternatives for this important park. In support of that NEPA process, it was agreed that NCPC would conduct a design competition to generate creative solutions for E Street that would be further evaluated in the NEPA process. Earlier this month, NCPC selected five design teams to participate in the competition, and on May 9, they received a briefing from NCPC, the Park Service, and the Secret Service about their challenge. The lead designers for the five teams are Hood Design Studio, which is a landscape architecture firm from San Francisco; Reed Hildebrand, a landscape architecture firm from Watertown, Massachusetts; Rogers Marvel, which is an architecture firm from New York City; Sasaki, a multidisciplinary planning and urban design firm from Watertown, Massachusetts; and Michael Van Vulcanberg Associates, a landscape architecture firm located in New The teams were provided with specific criteria that their designs need to adhere to, but these five overarching objectives to the competition capture the requirements well. These objectives are that each design concept, one, accomplishes effective security for the White House and its grounds; two, minimizes conflicts between official traffic entering and exiting the south side of the White House and visitors approaching and/or viewing the White House; three, creates an attractive environment that is not dominated by security elements for daily passage by and visitors approaching the southern fence of the White House; four, maintains and preserves the historic integrity of President's Park South, which includes Sherman Park, First Division Monument, the ellipse, its side panels and roadways, State Place, E Street, Hamilton Place, and South Executive Avenue; and, five, does not preclude the possibility of reintroducing traffic along the E Street corridor in the future should the threat environment change and the government elect to do so. So here's where we are on the remaining schedule here this month we'll be active. On June 20, the design concepts will be submitted to NCPC, and we will share them with the public on June 21. The design concepts will be made available on our website, and the submission boards will be posted in the White House Visitor Center. Public comment will be invited both online and at the visitor center. On June 28, NCPC will host a public meeting where the competitors will present their design concepts to the Security Task Force, who will be serving as the jury for this competition. That meeting will be held here in the commission chambers, starting at 12:30. Each design team will be given 15 minutes to present their concepts, followed by up to 15 minutes of questions and answers from the task force. And after all the concepts have been presented, members of the public who sign up in advance will be allowed to share their thoughts and reactions as well. On June 29, the Security Task Force will meet to rank the concepts, and the report of the task force, along with the presentation from the competition winner, will be made at next month's commission meeting scheduled for July 7. And finally, I would say it's also important to remember that even though the task force will identify a winner to the competition, all of the concepts generated through this competition will be further evaluated and considered within the NEPA process being conducted by the Park Service and the Secret Service. And that concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Bill. Questions for Mr. Dowd? Hearing none, thank you very much. A lot of work has gone into this, and we're moving forward quite well. As part of the executive director's report is the delegated actions, and we do have one speaker today who would like to address one of the items in the delegated actions. That is Ms. Brenda Vianias, please. Forgive me if I have mispronounced your name. The item to be addressed is the University of the District of Columbia's Student Center at the Van Ness campus. And Ms. Vianias represents the Van Ness Residents Association, and as such, you have five minutes.
Mr. Chairman, can I interrupt? I need to recuse myself from any discussion on this case, so I will excuse myself from the room, and I'll come back when the testimony is over.
Understood.
Is there some way to change the slides?
I think so. Everybody wants to help. Thank you, welcome.
I represent the Van Ness Residents Association, which is the 80 households on the three tree-lined blocks between Reno Road and Wisconsin Avenue. The residents are families with children, couples and singles, working professionals, and retirees. Almost all homes are owner-occupied. The area is a popular location for young families and professionals who want urban amenities and reasonable commutes. UDC proposes to convert the Van Ness campus from a community college serving non-traditional district residents to a traditional four-year college with selective admissions, providing district residents with affordable quality education. It proposes to increase enrollment at the Van Ness campus from the current 3,183 to roughly 6,500 students by 2020. We were told that today's hearing addresses only the student union, and our remarks cover traffic, parking, and construction issues associated with the new union. If you take under consideration the larger campus plan we ask that be allowed to present at that time. We recognize that the university has historically played an important role in providing low-cost education to district residents. We strongly support education for D.C. residents and hope that it will enhance their ability to find employment. But what we have here are two areas adjacent to one another with very different goals and lifestyles. The university wants a vibrant student life with a large enrollment, sports teams, pep rallies, concerts, and 600 students in a dormitory. The neighborhood, on the other hand, wants a quiet area where they can raise children, restore their energy after a long day at work, and bring in groceries and small children from the parking spaces in front of their house. Looking at our community's needs, it's clear that this plan was conceived as a one-sided document that ignores the existence of the low-density residential area that surrounds it. At every point where the plan refers to residential areas, it means the apartments along Connecticut Avenue. So beginning with traffic, Van Ness Street is an east-west route from Connecticut Avenue to Wisconsin. It's classified as a residential collector street. The function of a residential collector street is to connect local streets to arterial roads, but it is not a crosstown arterial like Porter or Nebraska or Military, whose function is to carry traffic from one arterial to another. It's a three-lane street with one lane of parking. It's narrow and crowded. Traffic levels are already high on Van Ness Street, and it's currently the subject of a traffic calming study by DDOT. Assertions in the transportation study of the campus plan that, quote, "impacts from the campus plan will be minimal," ignore the realities of real-world transportation choices. Students, faculty, and staff commute long distances. Increased enrollment will only increase the absolute number of vehicles despite proposals to encourage use of public transportation. Parking is a particular headache for our residents. Students already park on Van Ness Street. Over the past week, when UDC was out of session, half the spaces on our street have been empty. When UDC is in session, every space is filled. Residents carry small children and groceries some distance to get back to their homes. Although we hope providing incentives for mass transit will have some effect, it will never, never eliminate automobile usage. Therefore, we ask that the student union be modified. The student union is a large building which provides no additional parking. In view of the UDC traffic report's admission that campus planning operates at or above capacity during the day, we ask that the plan be modified to require the construction of additional parking as part of the construction of the student union to accommodate overflow parking on Van Ness and other neighborhood streets. We question whether increased parking fees will really exacerbate the neighborhood's current parking problems. In setting parking requirements for the student union, we believe that the zoning regulations' requirement of one parking space for every 2,000 square feet of gross area should be taken into account, since this student union will include a ballroom for 500, dining facilities for 400, and other student and community activities. These spaces would be in addition to the additional spaces needed to absorb the current overflow parking on Van Ness, VZI, and other North Cleveland Park areas. We are also concerned that the current design of the student union cuts off a long-established pedestrian cut-through under Building 39. This is a direct route from the neighborhood to the metro, and it's important to preserve this access. Without the cut-through, pedestrians will have to walk through the campus or walk all the way around the huge new student union to get back up to the neighborhood. We would prefer to see some modification made that includes a cut-through. In conclusion, UDC is an urban university with a relatively small campus, 21 acres. It's surrounded by a long-established residential neighborhood with young families and working professionals. UDC has traditionally operated and was designed as a community college, and the transformation to a large residential campus will put great strains on the traffic systems in our neighborhood. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much. The item before you is a delegated item. It is the preliminary site and building plans for the student center. We have Mr. Hinkle here, who also can address any questions or comments you may have. But do you have any of the speaker? Thank you very much. And do we have any comments or questions to staff on this project? Mr. Greenwald.
Can someone explain why this was put on as a delegated item?
We did review the concept last month, and the commission had no particular issues with that concept. And so we put it on as a delegated item for preliminary review, simply because the height, the bulk, the massing, the proposed use of this structure, the student union, has not changed. What has changed is some minor revisions to the facade of the structure and the tower Currently, the UDC is working through the master plan elements, which includes the parking for the entire site, and the expectation is that will be in front of the commission for review in July. And at that point in time, we can certainly address a number of the issues that have been brought up. I would like to add that the university has been working, over the course of the last couple of months, to address the issues that were presented in the testimony today, as well as other issues. So hopefully, by the time the commission sees that master plan in final form in July, that a number of these issues have been addressed.
Mr. Dennis?
There was reference made to a traffic calming study. Is that part of this plan, or is that on a separate track with City Department of Transportation?
I believe what was referenced was a DDOT study for the area, and that does include some minor alterations to the roadways, as well as some additional pedestrian and bicycle However, that's not part of the university's plan. However, the university has expressed support for some of the recommendations within that study.
Thank you.
As part of the master plan, is there not a traffic element required?
There is a traffic element required. There has been a traffic study created for the master plan recommendations, as well as for the new student center. Essentially, the findings of that study is that if there are sufficient transportation demand management measures taken by the university, then the traffic itself will not increase in the area. What will increase is the use of alternate modes of transportation by the people going to and from the university.
The university traditionally was like a community college in that it had students coming and going throughout the course of the day. As a four-year institution, is that pattern likely to remain, or are you going to have more students arriving in the morning, staying all day, and then leaving? Is that a mitigation to what it's been in the past?
We do have representatives from the university here, and I might want to invite them up to answer that question for you.
Welcome.
Allison Prince with Gulston and Storrs. On behalf of the University of the District of Columbia, we have an extensive traffic study that was prepared in connection with both the student center and the campus plan. And I would say that as the university transitions into a four-year institution, the traffic patterns may change. I think there may be less in-and-out traffic during the day. Certainly, the student center will create an opportunity for students to remain on campus for longer periods of time, which we regard as a good thing in terms of impacts on the neighborhood. Since many of the surrounding streets have two-hour parking limits, the chance for spillover parking should be diminished if students feel compelled to stay on campus longer. Those short-term opportunities in the neighborhood won't be as appealing to them. But this has been exhaustively reviewed in the traffic studies, not only by our traffic study, but by a traffic engineer hired by some of the neighbors, and there are very, very detailed TMP measures that are part of this proposal.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Did you have something else that you wanted to add?
Yes, I think, Brenda Vianess, on behalf of the neighborhood, again. I think it might be useful for you to look at the ANC's Traffic Experts Report, because there is steady concern about the level of traffic and parking on Van Ness Street. We are overclogged at this point, and, I mean, the fact that I've come here means we are very, very concerned about it. We have never heard anything from DDOT in response to the traffic calming study. There has not yet been any sharing of ideas. And so what you discussed today in terms of bicycle lanes is news to us as neighbors. We are somewhat, we have definitely talked with the university and the representatives, but we have not reached any kind of satisfactory conclusion in terms of the pedestrian cut-through or the parking problems, and we cannot help but be skeptical, given the level of problems we have right now, that their proposed traffic management plan will take care of all the problems that exist. Any kind of police enforcement of the two-hour limit now happens at 10 o'clock, and everybody knows it's over at 10:30. So we got a lot of parking.
Thank you. Did you have something else, Mr. Dennis?
Is the UDC expansion a fait accompli, or does it depend upon a funding stream from the city or the federal government or any other source?
My name is Eric Thompson. I'm the senior project manager for capital construction at the University of the District of Columbia. The funding sources anticipated to allow us to grow and support the 6,500 student enrollment is already in place. A significant portion of that is the funding for the construction of the student center, which was a part of our previous six-year plan, and will be completely funded for the building.
Thank you. As noted, this is preliminary, and so there's still a lot of work to do from the planning perspective and with Mr. Hinkle. And so I'm sure you will remain in touch with Mr. Hinkle and others, and we look forward to continuing to work with you. This has been very helpful. Thank you for coming. Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Miller?
Yeah, I would, there it goes. Just, we appreciate the concerns that were expressed by the Van Ness Residents Association. There is a local process, the zoning commission, campus planning process, which is ongoing and which the community and also the planning are participating in. And I think these are legitimate concerns. I think they should be addressed at the local level. I don't really think that there are federal interests that need to be addressed here, but I do appreciate the representative coming forward to share commission today.
Thank you. Mr. Costa, did you have anything else in your director's report? Okay, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda, item number three, is the legislative update, and Ms. Skylar?
I actually have several things to report, Mr. Chairman. The first, Representative Norton, on May 24, introduced what's known as the National Mall Revitalization and Designation Act. We believe this is possibly the third time that she's introduced this to Congress. The act designates NCPC, confers authority upon NCPC to modify Area 1 and Area 2 as locations designated under Commemorative Works Act for commemorative works, and then to notify the Secretary of Department of Interior or the Administrator of GSA. This authority is without review and is without any input from other federal agencies. It also proposes to confer authority upon the Secretary of Interior or the GSA Administrator to recommend to Congress that it terminate the authority of a particular commission to pursue a commemorative work in advance of its set termination date, if it's believed that the entity does not have the capacity or the resources to successfully conclude its construction of a commemorative work. It also requires NCPC to prepare recommendations to improve the commemorative work process, working with the Park Service, and giving consideration to the memorials and museums' master plan and the legacy plan. And finally, it requires Secretary of the Department of Interior to prepare and submit to congressional committees a master plan designed to enhance the visitor's enjoyment, amenities, and cultural experience associated with the mall. At this time, the bill is in committee.
Thank you.
There's more, unless you wish to discuss.
But wait, there's more. Please proceed.
Okay. Congress has been very busy. The next item introduced on March 30 in both the House and the Senate was the National Women's History Museum Act. This was introduced last year, no progress taken, and has been reintroduced in both House and Senate. The bill would require GSA to sell the Cotton Annex, which is located at 12th Independence C. and James Forrest Building, those are its boundaries, to the National Women's History Museum, Inc., at fair market value within three years of the date of the act. It will require the National Women's Museum, Inc., the group, to use the site for 99 years for museum purposes, and if not so used, it would revert to the federal government. It also requires the general services administrator to cooperate with the museum to help the group obtain zoning and other land use approvals. Now, the interesting item about this particular act is, once the property is sold, the commission will not have any direct authority over development of the museum itself, but they will only be able to participate through review of the zoning that's applied. There was no authority reserved for the commission once the property There was no authority reserved for the commission once the property reverted to private ownership. The next item is the, what's known as the FTC and National Gallery of Art Facility Consolidation Savings and Efficiency Act. This was introduced in February. It was referred to committee and it's already been reported to, with amendments, to the, to the, to the House. This requires GSA to transfer jurisdiction custody and control of the FTC site down here at 600 Pennsylvania Avenue to the National Gallery of Art and it will, to become the north building of the National Gallery of Art. The National Gallery of Art under the act would be required to pay the cost of renovation and GSA would be required to relocate the FTC to one of, well, one of two specific sites to include Building 8, a federal building over in the southwest, or interestingly enough, the GSA headquarters or another building that's deemed appropriate by GSA. And the cost of relocation of the FTC would come from cost savings that are apparently going to be realized in relationship to a, to the Salt Lake City Courthouse. My final, my final report today is on the Museum of Ideas Act of 2011. This would establish a Museum of Ideas Commission to develop a plan for the establishment of a museum that presents the history and evolution of ideas in fields of science, sociology, philosophy, economic, and policies. And it creates a commission to devise a plan that will address the cost of the museum locations and whether or not that the museum should be located within the Smithsonian. This was introduced in January and it's been referred to committee and now into subcommittee. That concludes my report. If there are any questions?
On the FTC National Gallery item of the options, one was to move the FTC to a GSA building?
To the GSA headquarters building.
Headquarters at 18th and F.
Yeah, 18th. It's not clear whether that means GSA would be staying and they would simply be adding them into the mix or if GSA would be locating, relocating elsewhere. But there were three options given and that was one of the options.
Good, thank you. Questions, comments? Hearing none. Thank you. Item four on the agenda is the consent calendar and we have four items. Item four A is the gas line relocation at the National Museum of African American History and Culture. Item four B is the master plan amendment for the building addition and perimeter security at the H. Carl Moultrie Courthouse in Judiciary Square. Item four C is the District of Columbia Capital Improvement Plan for FY 2012 to 2017. And last, item four D is the second-stage planned unit development of Square 55 at George Washington University. Any questions on any of these items on the consent calendar? Hearing none. All in favor of the consent calendar, say aye. Opposed, no. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, is there a motion to on the consent calendar? It's been moved and seconded now. All in favor of the consent calendar as before, you say aye. Opposed, no. Consent calendar is adopted, thank you. Then agenda item number five A is the site improvements and perimeter security at the Mary East Switzer Building and we have Mr. Detman from staff.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. Staff will be presenting the U.S. General Services Administration's proposal for site improvements and perimeter security at the Mary East Switzer Building located at 330 C Street Southwest. The Commission's review of this project is for preliminary and final approval of site and building plans. The project is located, again, at the, at the Switzer Building, which is located in southwest DC. You can see the project site outlined in red. On this diagram, the Switzer Building is bound by D Street on the south, C Street on the north, and then Third and Fourth Street on the, on the east and the west. The Switzer Building was built in 1940 and is currently occupied by offices of the Department of Education, Health and Human Services, and the International Broadcasting Bureau. Also, a child development center for approximately 80 to 90 children operates in the ground floor of the Switzer Building. Surrounding the Switzer Building are primarily mid-rise federal office buildings. You can see here the Department of Education headquarters, the Humphrey Building, which is HHS headquarters, the Cohen Building is directly north, and then FOB 8, which in the future will be occupied by the Architect of the Capitol and offices of HHS. If you recall, the Commission reviewed site improvements and perimeter security at FOB 8 in March of 2010. Also in close proximity is the future, the site of the Eisenhower Memorial as well as the American Veterans Disabled for Life Memorial. It's just a closer look at the project site, dotted in, in the black outline here, that's the, the extent of the, the work or the, the project scope. You'll note that it also, it takes into account the entire block of the Switzer Building and extends to the north sidewalk on the north side of C Street. You also know that there's a large 114-car surface parking lot on the north side of the Switzer Building, which is made available for employees of that building and also four spaces are currently reserved for the Child Development Center for pickup and drop-off purposes. Just some existing conditions, the three images along the top are of C Street, all looking east. Along, this is the, a picture of the south sidewalk on C Street, you can see an existing ventilation shaft currently blocks pedestrian flow along the sidewalk. This is looking at the, the surface parking lot on the north side. And then further down the sidewalk along C Street is another ventilation shaft that services some underground mechanical equipment and a loading area, which is underneath C Street. And on the opposite side of this shaft is actually a, an exit ramp for that loading area. The same kinds of situations exist on the, on this, on the north side of C Street as well, right inside the sidewalk. The photos on the bottom are just some existing conditions along Third, Fourth, and D Street. You can see here, this is the existing building yard sidewalk looking north towards HHS. This is along D Street, near the entrance of the Child Development Center, which is located on the south side of the building, and then lastly along Fourth Street. Before getting into the specifics of the proposal, staff wanted to note that the proposed site improvements and perimeter security is part of a, a larger concept that GSA has and a larger vision for C Street. Specific to the Switzer Building, the proposed site plan kind of takes its cues from a larger idea of creating a unified green space on both sides of C Street and hopefully the completion of that, that idea could come about in the future with some potential site improvements on the north side at Cohen. You can also see here the site improvements that were reviewed by the Commission at FOB 8 and it's, it's the diagram from GSA's Third and C Street Urban Design Guide, which shows this idea of kind of taking advantage of the surface parking along C Street and kind of reprogramming those and taking advantage of these urban spaces in order to improve the public realm along these two blocks of C. So here's a close look at the existing conditions, noting the, the surface parking lot. The, the proposal also does some work along C Street in narrowing the width of the cartway in order to resolve some of the pedestrian conflicts that occur as a result of the ventilation shafts. And so these red lines here, you see the, the existing curb line. And then as you can see in the proposed site plan, C Street is proposed to be slightly narrowed in order to allow for free flow of pedestrian along both sides of the sidewalk. And so again, this is the proposed site plan. You can see the, the surface parking lot is, is replaced with a large landscape plaza, which is separated into separate sloping lawn panels that are punctuated by pedestrian pathways that relate to the two entrances along the north side of the Switzer Building and lead to a mid-block crossing that is in line with an entrance of the Cohen Building. The lawn panels that you see here along the backside will be a vegetated bioswale, which will be engineered in order to accept and accommodate stormwater runoff from the hardscaped areas of the plaza. To the south of the lawn panels would be two other areas for, for programmed activity. Along the southwest side is a lawn area that could potentially accommodate a children's play space, made available to the public as well as used by the CDC inside the building. And then along the east is a hardscaped area, which GSA intends to work with the city on programming that for a potential vendor or a kiosk area of some sort. Several areas for, for bike parking and seating have been accommodated in the, the landscape plaza. The ventilation structures along the north and south sides of C Street are going to be treated in a different way in order to make them a bit more architectural, aesthetically pleasing, and to provide some canopy shade and seating for employees of the buildings in the area as well as visitors. And then finally, again, the, the cartway or the curb line of C Street is proposed to be slightly narrowed. Currently, it's about 56 feet. And in this proposal, it's going to fluctuate between about 22 to 34 feet in order to resolve some of the pedestrian conflict as well as calm some of the traffic along C Street. And so C, you see there, and the narrowing will allow for a mid-block crossing. The perimeter security has been integrated into the proposed site improvements. As you can see dotted in red here is the outline of the perimeter security barrier. And as you can see along C Street, it's been pulled well away from the north property line of the Switzer Building and is located approximately 25 feet from the front of the building. And so this, the landscape plaza is going to be on the outside of the perimeter security barrier and made freely available to the public. Along Third and Fourth Street, given that there's an existing building yard of 20 feet, the perimeter security has been successfully located within the existing building yard without having to narrow any of the sidewalk width there. And then along D Street, where there's almost a complete absence of a building yard as the property line runs pretty much along the south face of the building, the perimeter security will transition out to along the curb and kind of jog in and out either along the curb and then along the backside of existing metro vent grates and tree boxes. Here's some details of the perimeter security elements in the, primarily in the landscape plaza, what we'll be looking at is a hardened security fence, which will be, have a maximum height of three foot, three inches. It'll sit on top of a dark granite curb that will be designed in order to allow stormwater flow to run into there and into the bioswale on the backside of those sloping lawn panels. The fence will be comprised of dark metal bollards and, and metal fencing. The bollards are approximately eight inches wide and spaced about five feet on center. So the spacing between the bollards is approximately four foot, four inches. Along Third and Fourth Street, where the security is located within the building yard, you'll see this kind of treatment. It'll be a hardened garden wall that'll be comprised of, of bollards and fencing similar to what's shown on top. But then at, at particular intervals that are lined up with the window panels of the building, some, some limestone cladding will be placed onto the security elements just to kind of break down the fence, the hardened fence or garden wall and give it a little bit more pattern. Here's a cross-section of C Street. You can see, here's the cartway and then the new sidewalk condition, sloping lawn panel.
Mr. Detman?
Yes, sir.
Before we go further, the, can you go back one, the fencing? I've not seen that style of fencing on other projects that have come before us. This fencing will encircle the building where the red dotted lines were on the previous line?
Yes, so the, the, the top will be primarily located along the north side.
Yeah.
And then as it turns the corners and goes along Third and Fourth Street, it'll transition into this design.
What am I missing? Why is there this level of security, perimeter security at this particular building?
Back when the Commission reviewed the modern, the modernization of the building, there was a, an assessment that was done in order to determine the level of security, given the size of the building, the number of employees. And it was determined that it was to be a, I believe, a Level 4 security. And so that drove the, the need for this particular level of security. I will say that in that assessment, it was recommended that a 50-foot standoff distance, given the occupants and the size of the building, was recommended in that report. However, given the fact that you can't get that level of setback within the urban environment, GSA has, you know, essentially accepted a certain level of risk and decided to locate the perimeter security inside the existing building yard in order to achieve a certain level of security and balance the impact of security on the public realm.
Thank you.
Just some renderings, looking at the, the C Street Plaza. This is the, this is looking at the proposed pavilion structure, which will be located on the north and south sides of C Street. And this is how the existing ventilation shafts will be treated and so kind of made from such a utilitarian feature into a more functional, aesthetically pleasing element within the landscape. This is the east side of the plaza. You can see here is that, that vendor or that kiosk area that GSA intends to provide as well as the bioswale on the backside of the, the lawn panels. This is along Third Street. You can see the hardened garden wall located on the inside edge of the sidewalk, along with a complete rebuilding of the public space along all the streets to increase the amount of tree canopy vegetation, as well as some porous paving and, and treatment of stormwater runoff using LID strategies. Fourth Street is essentially the same condition as Third Street with the security inside the sidewalk. And then along D Street, where we don't have a building yard, the security will be located out along the curb. However, it will be designed to be consistent with local streetscape standards. It'll be comprised of a series of hardened elements such as street lamps, bike racks, bollards, as well as garden walls along the backside of the, the tree boxes. So moving into staff analysis, staff looked at the project with respect to conformance with the comp plan, NEPA, as well as 106, and consistency with other plans and projects, GSA's Third and C Street Urban Design Guide, the framework plan, and then took a detailed look at one specific planning issue, such as the CDC pickup and drop-off. Regarding NEPA and 106, GSA did prepare an environmental assessment in July 2010 and a supplemental traffic study in May 2011 to kind of look at any kind of changes in traffic conditions that had occurred since the preparation of the EA and to take a specific look at the CDC pickup and drop-off issue. GSA issued its original finding of no significant impact in July 2010 and then issued a revised Fonzie in April 2011. In reliance upon the same documents and analysis and any comments that were received, NCPC issued its finding of no significant impact for the project on June 1st. Regarding Section 106, GSA and the DC shipo determined that the project and mainly the location of the perimeter security would have an adverse effect on the LeFond Plan, the Switzer Building, and possible archaeological resources that could exist below the surface parking lot along C Street. They, the two parties, GSA and the shipo, entered into a memorandum of agreement in April 2011 and the stipulations of that agreement have specific measures in order to minimize and mitigate the perimeter security through location and design. Regarding the comprehensive plan, staff did find that it does conform to the objectives and policies of the comprehensive plan, and mainly those in the, the federal workplace environment as well as parks and open space element. The, the creation of the C Street Plaza will be a substantial improvement than what currently exists. And the, and the narrowing of C Street in order to create that pedestrian flow is, is going to be a welcome benefit. With respect to the Monumental Core Framework Plan, the framework plan looks at southwest and, and has the, the, it focuses mainly on improving the urban fabric due, loss due to the construction of superblock buildings and highways, as well as improving the quality of the public realm and sustainability in the area. And so the proposed site improvements and potential future improvements at Cohen and those that are underway at FOB 8 are going to do, are going to go a long way to improving the urban fabric as well as successfully linking the Eisenhower Memorial and the American Veterans Disabled for Life Memorial in the future. Regarding perimeter security, staff did find that it is consistent with the policies, the 2005 policies that the Commission has regarding the location and design of physical perimeter security. Where there's adequate building yard, it is located in the building yard and along D Street. Where there's a narrow building yard, it does go out to the curb. However, it has been designed to be consistent with the design over at FOB 8 as well as with the prevailing streetscape furnishings along the street. One particular thing that staff wanted to note is the, the point at which the security transitions from inside the building yard to out along the curb, unlike FOB 8, where, where that, that transition occurs, there's a bollard placed right in the middle of the sidewalk. The applicant has been able to successfully resolve the need to have a bollard right in the middle of the pedestrian flow through a slight widening of the building yard. And so it does create a slightly narrowed pedestrian, a pedestrian walkway here. What's being proposed is approximately five feet, but that was looked at and determined that it will not unduly impede pedestrian traffic along that street. Finally, looking at the issue related to the impacts of the project on the pickup and drop-off operation of the Child Development Center. Currently, the operation utilizes four reserved parking spaces in the north parking lot for pickup and drop-off, as well as three peak hour spaces that are available for 15-minute parking along D Street. As I noted, the entrance to the CDC, primary entrance to the CDC is, is along, is along D Street. As a result of the elimination of the surface parking lot, what GSA is in the process of implementing is the following provisions for pickup and drop-off. The operation will move completely to D Street and so the, the north parking lot obviously will not be available. The three spaces that are currently just available during peak hour, GSA and DDOT have worked together to determine that those would be available at all times during the day for CDC pickup and drop-off. In addition to that, GSA has already gone about marking through special pavement or special pavement- special pavement markings, an additional area of roughly four to five spaces that are available during the peak hours of AM and PM for 15-minute parking for CDC parents. GSA is also working with DDOT to design and install a speed bump at an existing mid-block crossing along D Street to further, you know, calm the traffic along, along D Street. GSA has looked at this, this issue very much in detail, especially through its supplemental traffic study and the, the conducting of a pilot study that has taken place since early May. Essentially, what GSA has been able to determine is that, looking at some data related to pedestrian vehicle tra, crash data in the past, the, the area presents no significant safety deficiencies regarding pedestrian flow. The, the peak hour traffic volume along D Street is relatively low, roughly two to three minute, two to three cars per minute. The existing mid-block crossing does help to control traffic speeds, and the installation of the speed bump will either further help to do that. The street width along D Street is wider than normal. It's about 34 feet. And so what that does is provides a little bit more buffer along the parking lane for parents to load and unload their children on the traffic side and obviously on the sidewalk side is available as well. The traffic consultant did note, did observe that the average dwell time for parents was about eight minutes. And so even during the peak hour where these parking spaces here are available for 15-minute parking, the dwell time was roughly eight, eight minutes. And so there was adequate turnover. And on no occasion did the traffic consultant observe that parents were queuing along the street, looking for a parking space for an excessive amount of time. GSA has stationed a security guard out along the curb to monitor and enforce these parking restrictions, and that ultimately the observation was that the operation is safe and efficient. DDOT has reviewed this and issued a report in support and its commitment to work closely with GSA to make any modifications as necessary. And then finally, staff conducted three separate site visits. So they went out there on six different occasions, three in the afternoon, three in the morning, and confirmed basically the same operations as, or the same observations that the traffic consultant did. It looked very safe and efficient. Parents seemed, seemed to not have a problem getting their children out of the car and into the facility. There was adequate space available. Only on one or two occasions did a parent actually idle, looking for a space, but what was occurring there is they weren't, they weren't aware that there was a space available further down the street. They just simply couldn't see it. And so perhaps a security guard could help facilitate the situation a little bit more. And so with that, it's the Executive Director's recommendation to approve the preliminary and final site and building plans for the site improvements and perimeter security at the Switzer Building, to note that DDOT supports GSA's plans to use the north curb of D Street for CDC pickup and drop-off, and to note its commitment to continue to work with GSA on making any kind of modifications to the operation. And to note that GSA plans to work with DDOT on the design of a speed bump near the existing mid-block crossing, will also assign a security guard along D Street to monitor and enforce peak hour parking restrictions, facilitate the movement of traffic, and assist parents as necessary. With that, that concludes my presentation. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Detman. We do have two speakers today, but before we go to them, are there any quick questions for clarification for Mr. Detman, Mr. Hart, and then Mr. Mitten is right?
Yeah, I have a quick clarification because we have not, GSA has not made a commitment to permanently assign a security guard. We have made a commitment to work, we have a security guard who is overseeing this effort now. And until such time that we, including DDOT, feel the problem, if it exists, has been addressed at that time, we will look at it again. But, but it would be disingenuous for us to state that we have permanently assigned a security guard, since that is generally speaking, not a security guard's job to monitor this. This is about security and not necessarily child safety, which is obviously a huge concern. And I'll address the other pieces of it later.
Mr. Hart?
Is there a speed problem along D Street that would warrant the speed bump?
No, the traffic study noted that the, the speeds were relatively low. That's what we observed. The, if there was speeding occurring, we observed that it was actually the metro buses going up and down the road. So in the design of the speed bump, GSA and DDOT are working on the design, and then they'll be reaching out to OMADA to inform the bus drivers that the speed bump is going to be there. And so in general, no, there's not a speed problem whatsoever.
Is there any criteria that DDOT would use to warrant the installation of a speed bump?
Not that I know of.
I'm, I'm seeing this as possibly setting a precedent for other daycare centers or other places in the city so that, you know, you then have this proliferation of speed bumps without a need for them.
I don't know of any criteria that DDOT, specific criteria that DDOT uses to determine whether or not a speed bump is warranted. Perhaps GSA can speak to that.
I think Susie Hill from, from our staff can answer that question.
My name is Suzanne Hill. I'm with GSA, and I actually met with DDOT's pedestrian safety expert on the speed bump issue, which, last week. And they have been doing some pilot projects around Lincoln Park, which is up in the Capitol Hill area. And what we looked at is there is a high pedestrian volume in, along D Street. In fact, there's more people than cars using D Street. And so they feel that it would be a good location for a speed bump regardless of, of any speeding issues, just because of the high pedestrian volume. So we're working with them on the design of that speed bump, but they do think it's a good location for a speed bump, mainly because of the high pedestrian volume that is there already because of the proximity of the metro station that's right there.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. We have, I'm sorry, Ms. Greenwald, excuse me.
Just a quick question about the building yard along D Street. Can you explain to me what the difference in space is that the perimeter needs to be moved outside the building yard to the other side of the sidewalk?
The, the difference?
Right, so there wasn't enough room, I think was the explanation for why the fencing needs to move to the other side. What was the difference in the building yard between?
Between Third and Fourth Street? Between Third and Fourth Street and D Street?
Yeah.
On Third and Fourth Street, the building yard, the, the, the distance from the face of the building to the inside edge of the sidewalk is 20 feet. Along D Street, it's essentially zero.
Okay.
Maybe one foot.
And it was expanded in the images that we saw because you're shrinking the sidewalk? Is that correct? Because you also indicated the sidewalk along D Street, instead of being five feet, would be narrower?
No, only at the corners of, of Third and Fourth and D, where the security transitions from inside the sidewalk to out along the curb. Instead of having a bollard in the middle of the sidewalk in order to maintain that continued security line, they're essentially wide, slightly widening the building yard. So basically, the building yard's getting a little bit closer to the backside of the tree box. And so it doesn't need a bollard in the middle of the sidewalk because the bollard that's inside and along the backside of the tree box maintains that security line.
Okay. And then also regarding the 50-foot setback that was brought up earlier, it's currently a 25-foot setback where the red line is, correct, in that?
It's 20 feet along Third and Fourth. It's 25 on the north side.
So if, what is the current setback? If, is there perimeter security on the far side of the parking lot?
There's no perimeter security out there right now. There's no temporary stuff out there.
Okay. But if, if there was perimeter security on the far side of the parking lot, that would be 50 feet?
I have that number. The distance from the face of the building to the outside edge of the, the parking lot, I, I think it's in excess of 50 feet.
That's what I, okay. So it would have been feasible if GSA and the tenant prioritized that, the 50-foot setback?
If GSA determined that a 50-foot standoff was absolutely necessary, they probably could get it by putting it on the north property line?
That was the ISC's recommendation.
That was the ISC's recommendation.
Well, it, it, as we saw, I guess, in the last Commission meeting, it was a lot, or two meetings ago with the GSA headquarters, where we've decided to forego perimeter security altogether. I think the, the, the building yard is so narrow around the other sides of the building that the, we did make a very conscious decision not to put perimeter security out at the curb. It, it's not, it's not GSA's preferred location of perimeter security at, at, on any of our properties to put it out on the curb. So, and here, we had an opportunity to be consistent with the setback and, and improve, you know, to 25 feet versus 20 and less, and integrate it into the design. So it's not, right now, the reason in, in part, there's no security at the, at the sidewalk is in, well, geez, the, the ventilation shafts provide some. You can't even walk on the sidewalk, much less put any perimeter security out there. So where we have the option, we are going for inside the building yard and integrate it into the design as much as possible. The ISC guidelines that are under, in the review phase now encourage experimentation. And we are encouraging our design teams to look at all kinds of possibilities, low-income impact development, tiger traps, all kinds of different solutions because the public realm, it is our, our view at GSA that the public realm has been diminished in quality by the perimeter security. And we're doing what we can to, to mitigate that wherever possible.
Mr. May?
Yeah, on the C Street, I guess, park, hardscape, whatever, the, you know, there, are those very curious garage ramps. I say curious simply because they're kind of an anomalous thing to have those big ramps there. So can you tell me where the actual outline of the garage is?
Where the actual outlet?
I mean, outline, where, where is the actual underground garage? Because it's under part of this, right?
Yes. I hope it'll show up on the screen here.
Okay.
And perhaps you can see it in staff's report as well, on page five, maybe. The outline of the garage actually is shown on this diagram. It's kind of right here.
Okay.
And like I said, it does, it spans both sides of C Street underneath both surface parking lots.
And, and those ramps serve the same garage?
That's right. On the north side, that's the entrance, and on the south side, it's the exit.
Okay.
And it's part of the reason why the lawns are actually sloped in order to get enough soil depth, in order to put in
Right.
the, the landscape that they wanted to.
So the, at least the center section of the bioswale is completely on top of structure?
This part right here.
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay.
The bioswale is actually going to percolate into cisterns
San, oh, cisterns, okay.
That will be reused for irrigation purposes.
Okay, that's, thank you. You jumped to my next question. Okay, that's, I think that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. We have two speakers today during the public comment period. One is Mr. Howard Kelsey, who is Deputy Assistant Secretary for Management, Facilities, and Policy at the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. And also Mr. Josh Levine, President of the Board of Directors of the HHS ED Center, the Child Care Center. Mr. Kelsey, welcome.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, good afternoon. I'm Howard Kelsey, Deputy Assistant Secretary for Facilities Policy at Health and Human Services. The department has submitted a, a letter on, on this issue, which I will not read, but addresses our general concerns, and I'll briefly go over those. The initial issue was our concern about just the general loss of parking. We have about 40 spaces, give or take, on the, the Switzer side of the street, and then another 30 or 40 on the Cohen side. And when the project is finished, the, the 40 spaces on Cohen will be taken away as well. The specific concern, and it was touched on as the last point, was the protected access and, and egress for parents dropping off the children. Moving from C Street to D Street opens the door to moving through traffic instead of a protected area. I walk by that street probably four times a week, and the, there is the ability for somebody to get a pretty good run down the street in their vehicle. I, I don't know what the, the number of cars is in the, in the street at any given time, but I've never gone down the street without seeing one or two. So there's a, there's constant traffic. It may not be a great deal, but it's constant. Without the speed bump, there's, there's plenty of time for people to get up and moving. The GSA to plan, plan to provide security through designated and forced swing spaces, the, the speed signage, and to me most importantly, the speed bumps. And I wasn't aware of that until we looked at the, the package, that the speed bumps were really in discussion. That's much appreciated. I think that would go a long way towards mitigating our concerns toward the, the project. We have, our concern naturally is the children. It's not the traffic going by, it's, it's the children. If we had the C Street left, we would be, we wouldn't be standing here because our area of, of access and egress would be taken care of. We understand and support the emphasis on, on greening this. It's otherwise, it is sort of a concrete jungle in this area. We are, we are also committed to protecting our employees and their children. So we're, we're not convinced that the proposed plan is, is able to do justice to both of those. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any questions?
More questions? Thank you. And second is Jason Levine. Welcome.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Jason Levine, the President of the Board of Directors of the HHS Education Children Center, and we're the federally sponsored Child Development Center, as Shane mentioned, that's located in the Mary East Switzer Building. As such, we have a strong interest in the plan that you guys are reviewing today. Overall, we're extremely excited about the creation of a beautiful park right outside our building that could be accessible to our families and children, both before and during school. But we like to go on record as strongly opposing the portion of the plan that removes all surface parking on the north side of the building, and is supporting the original GSA recommendation, which includes a very small parking lot in that space to ensure continued safe and protected access for our families, for the children who receive care in our center. Our concerns about the site improvement plans in their current state are threefold. Most importantly, we're concerned that moving the drop-off and pickup location for the center exposes children and families to excessive risk. It's simple. In addition, we feel we'll face significant issues with enforcement of the D Street parking restrictions, which allow our parents to reliably perform their drop-off and pickup duties twice a day every day. And finally, we're concerned about the exclusion of our voice in this planning process until just the most recent three months, which means that from 2008 until this past March, the most formative time for the plans as you've seen them, there was no voice at the table advocating for the needs and perspectives of our Child Development Center. Beginning with safety, our concern is simply put, performing childcare drop-off and pickup is significantly safer in a protected and access-controlled parking lot than it is on the curb side of a district street. Our parents have consistently stated that they feel much less safe managing their children on the sidewalks of D Street Southwest as it currently sits than they did in the north parking lot at Switzer. For years, as Shane described, both options were available to our parents, and yet 80% of our parents chose the parking lot option over the D Street option twice a day, every single day. And the reason they gave was safety. In addition to the regular car truck, car and truck traffic, as we've heard, two metro bus, and I should say high-speed, it appears, metro bus lines use D Street, and there are no speed impediments. And I will note, not even a single speed limit sign on the block that borders the Switzer Building. We note that the GSA traffic study addendum makes the assertion that vehicle speeds are quite low, but there is no objective data to support this. We've now asked twice for that data, and it appears no data was gathered. It was just the subjective opinion of the people who were standing on the sidewalks. We understand that DDOT has expressed a commitment to working with GSA to remedy some of these concerns, but our experience with prior DDOT commitments on D Street leave us less than optimistic that the long-term success of these new, of the long-term success of the newly-made commitments. We also note that in the letter that they provided, that DDOT's formal commitment is only to allow a parking usage and signage change, but there is no commitment to increased enforcement of those changes, which is a particular worry to us. Given that the D Street concerns have been present for months without any DDOT action, including the lack of a speed limit sign that has still yet to be addressed, we would urge the Commission to at least withhold final approval for this project until GSA and DDOT are able to implement remedies that have been promised to date. Our second concern is that any reliance on regular enforcement of parking restrictions on D Street sets the Child Development Center parking plans up for failure. As I alluded to before, our experience with DDOT's enforcement of parking restrictions on D Street has been lacking. For the past two years, various members of our board and parent community have reached out to DDOT to assist us with illegal parking on D Street and have predominantly met with failure. Even GSA's own representatives have agreed with our characterization of DDOT's enforcement as deficient, which was a reason their project team used in justifying the inclusion of GSA leased space during the pilot project, leased space that could be enforced by Federal Protective Service rather than DDOT. Our concern is that once the entire D, D Street parking zone reverts to DDOT-controlled space, and potentially we lose any staff member on the curb that could help us with that enforcement, the enforcement will revert to its former lax state, and we're going to go back to a situation where our parents deem situation where our parents deem frankly unsafe. Worse still, with half the parking zone reverting to metered parking in the middle of the day, our fear is that meter parked cars will overstay their welcome, just as they do on Independence and Constitution, all day, every day, and then there will be no timely enforcement by DDOT to allow our parents to safely perform childcare duties at the end of the day. Our final concern is with the fact that the site improvement plan process has been going on since as early as 2008, but our center was only made aware of it in March of this year. Our core issue is that the Child Development Center has unique needs and challenges that should be considered in a plan as wide-ranging as this, and the exclusion of these needs and challenges through the plan's most formative time period means that decisions have been made, funding has been committed, in ways that have drowned out our voice. Federally-sponsored childcare centers are supposed to have a partner in GSA to help us safely and effectively care for our children, but we feel that we haven't been treated as a partner for the clear majority of this site improvement planning process. As such, by the time of our inclusion in March, we were left fighting to include a solution to our loss of parking in these plans that, at all, a fact that's reflected in the hurried parking pilot program, which remains unfinished today. Overall, we urge the Commission to help us keep our children and families safe and return a minimal amount of parking to the space north of the Switzer Building. There's over an acre of land being planned, space large enough to make it hard to see how design goals of greening the southwest quadrant exclude the very real urban planning goal of making effective use of space for all relevant parties, a position that GSA itself agreed with in its original recommendations in 2010. At an absolute minimum, we ask that the Commission withhold final approval of the Switzer Site Improvement Plans until GSA and DDOT put into place commitments that they've made to making D Street a safer roadway. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Levine, very much. That ends the public comment period, and we'll return the discussion to the Commission members. Are there further discussion points or questions? Ms. Steingasser.
And I'm not sure who the right party is, but is there an outdoor play area for the daycare, or is it all internal?
I'm happy to answer that. There's a outdoor overhung play area outside the Humphrey Building, which is northeast of the Switzer Building.
So it's elevated, it's not on the street?
It's on street level, but I don't know if you're familiar, the Humphrey Building overhangs, the second, or I guess, third story overhangs the plaza, and it's under that overhang.
Oh, it's under the overhang, okay. And within the building, where is the daycare located? As, I'm looking at the site plan on page five, again, I'm not quite sure who's the right person.
Again, I'm happy to answer that. It's squarely in the middle of the building, so one of the overheads, you could see how the roof is slightly different between the two sections, the east and the west, it's in that east part, that's the wider roof, and it's squarely in the center. So a couple of times, the D Street entrance has been referred to as the primary entrance for the Child Development Center, which we've objected to throughout. It's squarely in the middle. Our parents, when they parked in the Switzer parking lot, came in the front entrance, and it's equidistant between the two.
Okay. And the, again, I'm putting this up for whoever's the right person, when you've worked with DDOT, and I'm sorry to hear they're not being more responsive, I suspect a lot of the violations down here are construction, parking, and the lab is still under construction down at School Street. There's a lot of construction going on, both in this building and in the perimeters and sections.
So in our past, they have not been a problem, because they typically have leased space that they can park behind barriers. It's the fact that along D Street, there's a gym, there's a Starbucks, there's a deli, and then there's just the Metro Plaza, and all of those contribute to people. So frequently, when we show up in the morning to drop off our children, gym users are parked in the spaces.
I see.
And when we've tried to work with DDOT to increase that enforcement, we've been told that it's an incredibly difficult thing for them to do for 15-minute zones, because they have to have agents patrolling every 15 minutes in order to observe.
And when people have worked with DDOT, I guess, GSA has coordinated with DDOT on future signage, does some of that signage include, you know, children, you know, the yellow children ahead, children at large, have we kind of worked through that with them? Is that something we could, we as the Office of Planning could help facilitate that conversation?
We've had a lot of conversations with DDOT on this project and signage, and what they have committed to, and which we have a letter signed from DDOT, is to any signage needed for the smooth operation of the Childcare Center drop-off. And so things like speed limit signs, I mean, they, basically what they have told me is I can put a request in saying, "We need this signage put up," and they'll manufacture and put it up for us. And so they have been very cooperative on this project.
Okay, that's good to hear. I know down at I Street Southwest, there's a public school, and it has this kind of variable parking, drop-off in the morning, and I've paid more than my share of tickets for it. They seem to know where I park illegally, so I just need to redirect their attention.
What I'd like to say, and to what Jason has been saying, is that I think in the past, they've had a hard time getting DDOT to enforce it, but since we've been planning this project and bringing the issue to their attention, I'm hoping that we can really get DDOT to step up and help enforce that. We've also been investigating whether or not FPS can actually come out and tow the cars as well, and so that's something the security guard can call FPS, and even after it reverts back to DDOT, we are of the understanding that since they are technically breaking the law, FPS can come and tow them, so we may not necessarily have to rely on DDOT or DPW to tow the cars, even after it reverts to DDOT control.
Okay.
So that's things we're all working through, but we're very encouraged by that.
I'd add also that DDOT has assured us, we also, if we get into this and the spaces allotted on D Street prove to be insufficient, DDOT also controls the spaces, there are some curb cuts on C Street, which would afford us another opportunity on the other side of the building. I don't really know how to defend against DDOT's alleged deficiencies in terms of enforcement, but I'm pretty confident that we've had enough of a ruckus over this building, ourselves making it long before March, looking at this issue. And backing up from just the parking and the drop-off issues, this entire site has been designed around the notion that there are a large number of kids that consider this their schoolhouse, and they have no place to play. The grass panels have been left, I've been, you know, pounding my fist about kids playing duck, duck, goose. And as people within GSA will tell you, and Jason, I should address you on this, this project has been in the works for a long time, and I have a very energetic interest in its success, because it really has been the poster child for why GSA needed to form the Office of Planning and Design Quality, and pay attention to issues other than just parking, which is the, was the driver for this project from the beginning, it seemed, and that just seemed significantly wrong, that we would be designing a space for 120 cars instead of thinking about particularly the kids who are in this building, to say nothing of the federal workforce. It is a dreary, at best, neighborhood. It has been this way from the beginning, more years than I care to admit ago. I lived a block away when I was a college student at GW, and this was about as close to the campus as I could afford to live, and it has gotten no better in that very short intervening period. We've also had a lot of development since then. We are, GSA is looking wherever possible to raise the bar in terms of sustainability, not only in the surrounding urban areas that we inhabit, but in the building, in the design and construction of all of our projects. We're really looking to the Switzer site to be a model for things to come. We are ever mindful of the child safety issues, and while I can't, the reason I made the quick correction to the security guard being that person who's going to, who's going to keep an eye on this, I just couldn't, I can't let that stand in the record and not correct it. That is not to say that until we get it right, we won't have that security guard paying attention. It is, it is true that we came forward with a design that was whittled down from 120 spaces, then I can't even remember, we've had so many iterations of this. It went to 96, it went to something in the area of 40-something, then it got down to the 11-space scheme that you saw. I was willing to let that go, and think of it in terms of a programmable plaza, but when we really came to looking at these issues, and we feel pretty comfortable that we can assure with the cooperation of DDOT, and NCPC, to their credit, has been very instrumental in pushing this, and the parties that we would need their cooperation. They've also been pushing this effort because we feel, all of us, so strongly that this neighborhood desperately needs a green space, and particularly the kids, which is why this has been a very disheartening set of circumstances for me. There is a playground, to your point, Jennifer, planned for the site. The grass panels will absolutely be, will be there and maintained well by GSA for the use, for use by the kids. We hope that we will be able to program the space for all kinds of things by closing these streets from time to time. Eventually, the idea is that we will go across the street to the Cohen yard and do something equally spectacular, so that we have an entire precinct that will be available also for the kids. So all we can do is offer the evidence of the steps that we've taken, give our assurances that we will continue to take those steps, and count on DDOT to do their part. I also want to add, too, that it, I'm sorry that the center feels like it hasn't been consulted. My record of the consultation is pretty complete and goes back, it seems to go back a long way, so maybe it's just we haven't had the right people at the table. But as far as the NEPA process has gone, and the consultation with HHS and the other occupants of the building, we did feel that we had exercised due diligence. So clearly, we have work to do.
Mr. Hart, and then Ms. Greenwald.
I've got one question. In the zoning ordinance for a daycare center, is there any requirement for off-street passenger loading and unloading?
Not for pickup and drop-off, no. The only zoning requirement currently in the regs is for parking for staff.
Okay. And then I've got some observations. When I reviewed this, I thought this was an admirable job being done by GSA in proving what, in my mind, is a pretty miserable space now, and to put that much effort into landscaping and restraining the ATFP barriers in the way that they've done, I thought showed a lot of restraint and concern for the public environment. I really want to commend the GSA on that effort. There were a couple of things, though, that I sort of took exception to, and one of them was this discussion of a speed bump. I don't see how that is warranted. I share the concern for the safety of parents and children, and I just don't see that this is a unique situation that would warrant one where a school, or other daycare centers, or other metro stops might also want to step up and start putting speed bumps throughout the city and all the streets. The second item that I had some reservations were the mid-block pedestrian crossings. On C Street, the street's being necked down, if you look at the landscape plan, there's no direct connection from any front of the building to that cross, mid-block crosswalk. There's the sidewalk that runs the length of C Street, but there's no direct connection back into the building, so I don't see a demand line saying, "This is an important pedestrian connection between Cohen and Switzer." And then the mid-block crosswalk on D Street doesn't seem to go anyplace, and I think it's more dangerous to put crosswalks where motorists are not necessarily going to expect them. It's a norm that you have crosswalks at the intersections of streets where the corners are connected, and I've seen a lot of cases where mid-block crosswalks are really more of a hazard than a help. Thank you.
Commissioner Hart, I think I can address a few points that you just made. Max, if you wouldn't mind bringing up the slide that you actually have there. Regarding the mid-block crossing on C Street and its connection or its relationship to anything, Switzer currently, you know, it has two entrances here and here, Cohen actually has one center entrance here, and so the design influence there was actually to have pathways in, on the south side that led from the entrances to Switzer to the mid-block crossing that would essentially be on access with the pathways, or potential pathways on the north side, that would lead into the entrance along Cohen. So there was some thought that went into where are the entrances and how they would relate to the mid-block crossing. Along D Street, the existing mid-block crossing is across the street from, you can pick up just a little bit of the mid-block crossing right there. Directly across the street on the south side is the elevator to the Federal Center Southwest Metro Station. The metro station entrance, the escalators let out right here, and so actually, on our site visits, we did observe several parents with strollers actually coming off of the elevator and using that mid-block crossing. With regards to your comment about whether or not this particular situation is unique enough to warrant a speed bump and not set a precedent for other child development centers throughout the city, staff would find that this is unique enough because of the high use of the mid-block crossing, because of the presence of the metro entrance, as well as a block further east is an entrance to 395. And so perhaps psychologically for drivers intending to use that ramp may, you know, speed a little bit, or think that, you know, the highway entrance is there, so I'm going to start to accelerate towards the entrance. And so a speed bump would even, even though the traffic volumes that we observed and the transportation expert observed is relatively low, a speed bump to further alert drivers to the presence of a mid-block crossing and the entrance to a child development center would, I think, be justified.
Your explanation's helpful, thank you.
Mr. May?
I just had a couple, well, one question, which is, you keep talking about DDOT doing enforcement on parking rigs, I mean, is that, has that been moved from DPW to DDOT? Or is it still DPW that does parking? So it's DPW that actually does parking enforcement? Well, I mean, it seems like a small point, but if you want to call up somebody and complain about it, calling somebody at DDOT to complain about parking enforcement is not going to be very effective, because they don't really do the parking enforcement.
And I apologize, that's just my misstatement. We have the name of the district person for DDOT.
So you've been talking to the right people?
Correct.
Good, okay. Second thing is, it was mentioned before that Federal Protective Service might be able to get cars towed, but regardless of that, I mean, Federal Protective Service, they can issue tickets to people on district streets, right? Don't they have the authority to issue tickets? You know? Don't know? Okay. I mean, there, there's a combined ticketing system, all the police forces use the same, issue the same tickets, they're collected by the district, and I just assumed that Federal Protective Service could do it on D Street.
But the large point is that that's really, I mean, the Federal Protective Service is here for, you know, issues of security that have more to do with guys with backpacks, you know?
That's true, park police, too, but they also issue tickets.
But, but, yeah, well, maybe we should discuss this with DPW.
Yeah.
They don't have any problem finding me.
Well, yeah. Me neither, right? Anyway, it's just a thought, because if they are going to be in the building a lot of the time, there may not be a lot, there may be times when they can do ticketing. I think it was helpful seeing the explanation of why the mid-block crossings are where they are. I think there's also an entrance to the Design Center that's in the middle of the block, and I think there's a fair amount of traffic coming out of that. The other thing about this mid-block crossing is that this is a really big block, isn't it? I mean, isn't this like twice the normal block size in the district?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Last thing I would say is that, and this is a minor point, but I'm, I don't know whether I'm speaking for Bradley Provincia's not here, but, you know, it's an operational concern, which is just skateboarders, and it's an issue for us, and so I'm sure that the designers are taking that into consideration, but, you know, no matter what you can imagine will actually prevent the skateboarding from happening, it often just doesn't work, and so you need to be really, really creative and watchful about it, otherwise you'll wind up creating a destination for skateboarders, which I guess Park Service wouldn't mind, because it might take some of the traffic off our sites, but you don't really want it, might it? really want to invite it, I'm sure. Thanks.
Ms. Greenwald.
So, it's, it's clear from HHS and the Childcare Service that they preferred alternative B, which I understand would have had 11 parking spots, and was identified as a preferred alternative in the Fonzie. So, I'm curious as to why alternative, is this alternative A that we're looking at? And I think it is. And why are we looking at alternative A? What changed?
Originally, in the EA, you noted correctly that alternative B, which provides 11 parking spaces, was originally identified as the purpose, as the preferred alternative. And actually, I believe that design was originally submitted and then withdrawn. And through further design consultation and further analysis, and through the CFA review process, CFA reviewed this, I think, on four separate occasions. It was determined by GSA that alternative A, which we're looking at here today, was better aligned with the purpose and the need for the project. And so, GSA decided to advance that design to NCPC.
Yeah, I'm, three, three, not four. Three's a charm with CFA. And they, they rejected the, the design with the, with the parking spaces and told us to try again. And, and in the intervening period when the design was in development, Executive Order 13514 was, was issued, I guess, in the December of '09, was that? Somewhere around that? Mandating sustainability as our, as a primary concern. We also, the, the pedestrian safety has really been an issue along that whole corridor, as I mentioned before. You can't even, Shane, can you point out our lovely ventilation apparatus on the, yeah, yeah. You got, right now, you have to, if you had a stroller on that sidewalk, you'd have to come off the curb, get in the middle of C Street, and then jump back up again. So, so we're looking at, and we're also, we, we were looking at the urban design value, not just for the, to create the linkages, linkages there. Pedestrian safety, CFA, their, their last rejection was, was, oof, brutal. And, and again, the more green space, the better. So, so when we, when we faced our, I guess, was that, was it three? No, that was the second one. We, we decided, okay, we had to dial back and start again and look at the no-parking alternative.
Any further discussion? Mr. Don Gasper.
I just want to voice my appreciation. I think what GSA's doing here in terms of sustainability and greening of this part of the city is fantastic. And I, I share the frustration of planning for the car, overplanning for the public realm. We deal with that quite a bit, and it, it really is a huge struggle. And I think this is, is the sustainability efforts and the green space that are going to result here are really wonderful.
Is there a motion? It's been moved and
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the EDR, as before you, be approved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The EDR is approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Detton. Agenda item 5B is the U.S. Diplomacy Center at the Harry S. Truman Department of State Headquarters. And we have with us Ms. Hirsch. Welcome.
Welcome. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. On behalf of the Department of State, the United States General Services Administration has submitted the United States Diplomacy Center for a concept design review. The Diplomacy Center would be located at the Harry S. Truman Building, which is located at 2201 C Street in Northwest DC. The Diplomacy Center would be a museum and educational center to highlight the work and history of the Department of State. The project has been in conception since 2000, when Secretary of State Madeline Albright was in office, and Hillary Clinton has taken an interest in the project and would like to see it implemented. The Truman Building is located between 21st, 23rd, C and D Streets. Directly to the south, across C Street, is the American Pharmacists Association and the National Academy of Sciences. To the east, across 21st, is the Edward J. Kelly Park and the Federal Reserve Martin The Truman Building was constructed in two stages, with the section known as Old State being built in 1939 to 1941. When it was built, the main entrance along 21st Street, right here, was the main entrance for the building. The lobby features a very large mural that was painted by Kindred MacLeary. And again, this remained the main entrance until New State was built, until, well, New State was built in 1955 and opened, I believe, in 1960. The exterior of the 21st Street entrance reflects the modern architectural style of the building. There've been very few alterations to it. There were two canopies added in the mid-1980s, as well as a visitor's security screening center recently in 2006. And then the existing perimeter security is temporary. It would remain in place, though, through construction and after the Diplomacy Center So, the Diplomacy Center is essentially conceived of in two phases. The first would be in, the addition, that would be constructed at the 21st Street entrance, directly adjacent to the historic lobby. And the second is existing space within the George Marshall wing of the Truman Building. This would be constructed or renovated at a later date and would involve, involve very few exterior modifications. The addition here is roughly 12,000 square feet. When the second portion of the project is complete, the Diplomacy Center would be roughly So, essentially, the entry pavilion has been conceived of as a glass box addition to the Truman Building. One would enter directly off the sidewalk into this vestibule. And then, where they'd be greeted by an employee of the Department of State, who would ask, direct visitors to the north to go through security. And employees would be directed to the south to come up this ramp into the entry pavilion, through the historic lobby, and then through these turnstiles into the building. Visitors, after they've cleared security, would come up this northern ramp and enter the main section of the entry pavilion, where there would be these two sculptural enclosures. This one at the top would feature exhibits on the Department of State diplomats in history, whereas this semicircular enclosure would be a small theater. The other feature in the space that would be prominent is the stairway here. It was designed to allow light down into the lower level, which will accommodate a cafe, cafe seating, and some restrooms. And the other, the roof of the pavilion will also be glass, partially opaque and partially clear, so that one, one is standing in the entry pavilion, you can look up and have views of the historic facade of the Truman Building. As far as the exterior of the Diplomacy Center, the entry pavilion, there are three alternatives have been developed. There are a few features that are similar in all, so I'll just quickly point out what those are. Essentially, the pavilion's been designed to be in line with the string course of the Truman Building. In addition, the entry has been designed to be completely transparent glass in order to allow views of the original doorway of the Truman Building. And then, the roof is similar, and it's identical in all alternatives, in that it's glass. And then, there's a two-foot pop-up right here, which would be where the clear glass to allow the views to the building. And then, the applicant's preferred alternative at this point is to use opaque glass as wall cladding on all three facades. Alternative 1 also uses opaque glass as a frame on the edges of the east elevation, and then translucent glass on either side of the transparent entryway. And then, alternative 2, rather than glass, would be using metal panels on all facades of the pavilion. So, staff analyzed the concept design with respect to the comprehensive plan, as well as the monumental framework plan, and found that the Diplomacy Center is consistent with the policies of the comprehensive plan, particularly the preservation elements, as well as the visitor elements, in that it would provide an educational facility to showcase American diplomacy and also emphasize a connection between tourism and historic properties. As far as the monumental core framework plan, the Diplomacy Center is consistent with the vision that was put forward in that plan for the Northwest rectangle. And it would also promote mixed-use destination by combining federal office space with museum In 2004, the Commission reviewed the concept plan for the perimeter security of the entire Truman Building. In that plan, there were five security pavilions proposed for each entrance. The pavilion at the 21st Street entrance here has been replaced by the Diplomacy Center. And staff is recommending that the Department of State and GSA work together to, sorry. Well, the comment of the Commission in 2004 was that the security pavilions be placed within the property line and also respect the view corridors of the adjacent historic streets. And GSA and Department of State responded by placing the Diplomacy Center completely within the property line of the Truman Building. Since 2004, the Department of State and GSA have been working on the perimeter security plan, as well as the Diplomacy Center project, and a project at the American Pharmacists Association, which is also a perimeter security project. And staff is recommending that Department of State and GSA work to coordinate all three of these projects together so that any related planning issues can be addressed at one time, and also perhaps streamline the environmental review process. And to that end, we've set up a meeting with Department of State and CPSC staff to start discussing those issues early next week. As far as NEPA and Section 106 currently, all the projects are currently going through separate processes. Just to quickly mention, though, that a draft programmatic agreement is currently circulating among the consulting parties for the perimeter security master plan for the Truman Building. And that agreement would have impacts for the design of the Diplomacy Center. Staff is also recommending additional coordination and consultation with the Department of the District's Office of Planning and the Department of Transportation to address any surrounding transportation infrastructure that may arise from additional traffic that will be coming to the site, any reduction of parking on 21st Street that may result. In addition, any impacts to pedestrian circulation or views along the streets and the street Another series of recommendations staff is making relates to NCPC's Section 106 responsibilities. We have an independent Section 106 review for this project. And so, a series of recommendations were made in order to address any issues that may arise during that consultation process with the ship out. As I mentioned, the programmatic agreement for the perimeter security plan will call for all the additions and the entry pavilions to meet the Secretary of Interior standards for the treatment of historic properties. One of those issues to address will be probably likely the attachment detail of how the pavilion exactly connects to the Truman Building. And along with that, staff is recommending that an alternative be developed where the roof line of the entry pavilion be lowered below the string course line. Right now, the center section does pop up above that cornice line and, and break it. And then, the other recommendation would be to develop an alternative for transparency, to increase transparency, and use an alternative that has transparent glass for all sides of the building. Again, this would be to address Section 106 or a preservation issue to allow more views of the historic building. The executive director's recommendation, then, is to provide the following comments on that concept design for the Diplomacy Center. Essentially, there have been organized into three categories with process to revise the perimeter security plan for the Truman Building, to include the Diplomacy Center and submit that for final review and approval to the Commission. And along with that, to finalize the programmatic agreement with the Section 106 process and to coordinate the Section 106 with the NEPA and environmental review. And to continue to consult and coordinate with the District's Office of Planning and the Department of Transportation, along with NCPC, on any transportation issues that may arise with the museum function on the site. And then finally, the series of design recommendations centered around the 106 process and how the pavilion will meet the Secretary of Interior standards for the treatment of historic properties. And that also would include integrating a plan for the perimeter security of the Diplomacy Center with the perimeter security plan for the Truman Building, so that the two are compatible and in sync. And then finally, notes that the Department of State has placed the Diplomacy Center within the property line, as they requested in 2004, and has also set aside some space in the Diplomacy Center to highlight the historic lobby and mural, and to establish a connection between the mission and goals of the Diplomacy Center and the building it's located in. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Hirsch. Questions, I have one. Do you know, who's the architect of this project?
It's Byer Blinder Bell, and I believe they're here, if you have any questions.
Questions or comments from Commission members? Mr. Hart?
Sorry, Ms. May. I think this is a very interesting project, and from what I can see, it looks like it'd be a welcome addition. I do have a couple exceptions to the EDR. And I think we're getting out of planning and into architecture when you get down to the third, fourth bullet under design. It talks about where the cornice line is and what materials of the, the building are made of. And I would make a motion to strike those two bullets from the EDR.
It's been moved and seconded that we strike on page two of the EDR under design. The, what, the third and fourth bullets?
Third and fourth.
One is develop an alternative that lowers the roof, and the other is develop an alternative that uses transparent glass. Those would be struck. Or is there discussion on this motion?
Yes.
Mr. May?
I would just be interested in hearing what the staff has to say, why they would consider, why they put these bullet points in, and why they think it's important as a, from a planning perspective. I can imagine why at least one of them might be, but I'm interested in hearing what the staff has to say.
They were essentially both put in for our responsibility under Section 106 in the review of the project. To lower the cornice line would be to distinguish the addition from the historic building. The Secretary of Interior standards clearly state that any new addition should be compatible, but also, you know, obviously, separate. So, lowering that cornice line would do that. And also, the transparent glass would afford views to the historic building, so it would minimize any adverse impacts that may result, as a result of construction, the addition to the building.
I'd also note that this is a action that this Commission is taking as an independent federal agency. We also, as you mentioned, have section one, independent Section 106 responsibilities. This would also help us guide our consultation through the 106 process and having some recommendations from the Commission as to how to proceed with, with consultation as it moves through the process. So, there are, there are a number of reasons. We've had done this before with other projects. And I understand there is a fine line between planning and design, but I also believe that, you know, that we, we do have some specific responsibilities to discharge as part of our approval. to discharge as part of our approval of this project as it comes through. Again, this is a concept design. We are making recommendations that we hope the architect will consider and the design team will consider as they bring it through, but this process is still moving, it's still very early in the process, and I think these are reasonable considerations to put forward at this point in time.
Further discussion on this amendment? Hearing none. The amendment's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
Ayes, raise your hand. One, two, three. And, one, two, three. Noes, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. It fails the bullet stand. Any further discussion? Mr. May?
The -- I got very confused by the discussion of the security plan for the whole complex, and there was a graphic up there that showed five different security locations, one of which is going to be rendered moot, I guess, by this proposal. Is that, was that image that we saw, was that an approved plan or was that a concept that's not been finished?
Right. The perimeter security plan has only come to the commission as concept, so comments were provided back in 2004 on that plan, and it's still in development and has not been submitted yet by Department of State or GSA for our final approval or review.
Yeah, well, and you say that you're meeting with them next week to follow up on?
Right, to talk about all of the different projects that are going on surrounding the Truman Building and how we can coordinate and--
I mean, is there an actual effort at this moment to go ahead and get an approved security plan?
Well, they're in the process of completing an environmental assessment. I don't know if Representative from GSA or Department of State wants to speak to when or what their timeline is for submitting the security, the perimeter security plan for the Truman Building.
Right.
But at this point, I know that they're in the process of completing, still in the process of completing their EA and the Section 106 consultation.
Okay. Well, I'd be interested in understanding what the state of the--
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Bob Sanders. I'm with Department of State Office of Real Property Management. As is apparent, the perimeter security effort has gone on for a great deal of time, long effort. And in that time, even though the original plan, which envisions pavilions all array around at the entrances, which was presented and I think that the concept was approved and at time elapsed in the workings because there are a number of hurdles that we've worked with, with our neighbors and all the consulting parties, the National Academy of Sciences, American Pharmacological Association, as well as, of course, DDOT and other issues associated with this. But in that time, that pavilion at all the entrances, one was going to be the entrance to the Marshall Wing, which is that portion that the museum is going to be, and was envisioned to be a museum at some point in the future. Now, the duration it's taken of us to progress with the plans on the overall perimeter security, the first of those is actually up on D Street, which is coordinated with the hardening of the building. And I think if part of the timeframe, it's important to understand that the establishing the perimeter works hand in hand with the renovation and hardening of the building. This is an ISC Level 5 building, and we are now off working, renovating a portion on D Street and will be moving counterclockwise to the corner of 23rd Street. But having said that, the US, the United States Diplomacy Center has come online and moved, actually, up to a point now where it equals where we are in the perimeter security. And the reason for that is, it's, I think it's important to note that noting the opportunities that it provides in terms of pulling tourists up into the northwest rectangle and so forth, it's totally funded from private sources. It's all privately funded, donations and so forth, and it's true, with those sorts of initiatives, there are highs and lows, and that is also true with the visibility with higher management and so forth. There are highs and lows, and we have come into a window, if you will, where we are at a significant point in both of those areas, both in terms of public support financially as well as in terms of Secretary Clinton's support to get it done. And so consequently, because of that, this pavilion, which we knew was going to be different from the very beginning, has moved up to where we are today. So it's running equal now, even though it started much later, with the perimeter security. And yes, we're going to be meeting Monday, I believe, to talk about not only this but some of the other issues associated with it. The perimeter security pavilion, as was noted on the drawings from the first master plan that was presented back some time ago, the pavilion does retreat from the public way. The sidewalk there in front of the pavilion, which with the earlier security pavilion was about nine feet, is now over twenty-two, over 20 feet now. So it is really sort of a mitigating action, if you will, in response to some of the comments that we received before. Our dilemma right now is we have an opportunity, a window, if you will, to get what we feel is quite a facility. It does something that is quite unusual in that it brings the public into the Truman Building, which, you know, in times four, the Truman Building has been somewhat closed and very secure. So this is quite an opportunity. But having said the word opportunity, as I mentioned earlier, well, the funding and the visibility are here now to try and get this part done, granted, out of step perhaps with the rest of the perimeter security that is a longer-term effort.
Yeah, I think one of the things that makes me a little bit uneasy about this project is exactly what you just said in that last statement, that this is out of step and that it's getting a little ahead of the perimeter security. And I don't know about how the rest of the commission feels, but I would, I am interested in knowing that the permanent improvements on perimeter security are, we have some sense of where that's going, because right now, at least from the point of view of the appearance of it, it's, it has significant impacts, both, I mean, visual and traffic and everything else, and so it's, it would be helpful to know more about where it's going.
Sure.
And if there's anything that can be done to, you know, even if it's an executive session, getting a briefing, a more detailed briefing, something like that.
Of course. As was mentioned, you know, the programmatic agreement was distributed for comment, the pre-final environmental assessment has been submitted and has been reviewed, comments are being addressed. So, like I said, I think this meeting next week will go a great way in how we can tie these together.
Okay, so, but then, when is anything going to come before this, before the commission?
We, the, we met just yesterday or day before trying to indeed plan this out, and I believe, based on our timelines and so forth, you'll be seeing this, well, before September.
Before September?
Yes.
Okay. That's, that's--
Because we--
Wait a minute. Before September--
Well, but, you know--
Means submitting tomorrow.
Well, the reason being is we have a number of, you know, significant milestones with the EA to get done.
No, I understand that. I'm just trying to get a sense of what the schedule is, whether it's realistic.
And the other thing, too, is remember, too, is the perimeter security around the building is indeed an incremental development, as I alluded to earlier.
I understand implementation being incremental, but I think that the overall plan for it is what I'm very unclear on. Maybe I'm just not well-informed, in which case, that's what I would like to be, is better-informed.
I understand.
So, thanks.
Is there anyone, any other questions, or can--
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Other questions or comments among commission members? Ms. Wright?
Yeah. I would like to give Hani Hassan a chance to talk a little bit about the design. It has been peer-reviewed by the Design Excellence Program at GSA, and for those of you who weren't at the CFA meeting, it was pretty extraordinary, two of our toughest critics. Elizabeth Plater Ziberk was, if I could quote her, described it as a beautiful solution. And McKinnell, who, whose opinion I very greatly respect because it's tough to get a good review from that guy, admires the project greatly, which I thought was a stunner. I wanted to just have them vote and run from the room after that. But I think some of the questions that have been raised, I did not bribe my colleague to bring up the question of design versus planning. I swear, did not, although I agree that it's a little bit of a Trojan horse to always refer to the 106 process because the compatibility issues are very subjective and could go on forever. So, rather than get on that old saw, Hani, would you like to discuss a little bit of how your design has evolved to this point?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Hani Hassan. I'm principal with Bayer-Blinder Bell Architects, responsible for this project. Just before I comment with respect to those few items, I would like to thank Ms. Hirsch for the wonderful presentation and the thorough analysis of our design. I'm just absolutely impressed of how the depth of the analysis of the project and the overall and comprehensive analysis of this and your presentation. And also, I would like to ask, I would like to thank Mr. Levy for his input and along the whole process. This has been, this project has been in the works for quite some time. It started roughly when we got engaged in 2005, so it's been, I mean, to stand in front of you today at this juncture, thinking and hoping that this project is going to become reality, is a very huge step. Just in a, in a globe, from a global perspective, this project is very, very important to me personally and to many people because it represents a transformation of a building that was originally conceived and built as the Department of War. And today, this pavilion and this building is representing diplomacy, which is something that is very consistent with the mission of the U.S. Diplomacy Center, and it's very important to all of us. It is also consistent with the framework plan that was adopted by NCPC and CFA, and this project in particular would enliven this entire area and bring new life to that particular enclave and join and connect the National Mall to the Foggy Bottom area. But a little bit more specifically, our decisions really were guided by pretty much four principles. With respect to massing, if you, if you really consider, and I'm sure you're very familiar with the massing of the existing historic building, when you look at it closely, in order to mitigate the massing of that building, it is essentially various levels and tiered, which breaks down the massing of that building, and we have taken clues from that when we designed the pavilion, and that is partially why the building, the pavilion has those two levels, and I'll elaborate on that more specifically. We have also taken great care in terms of putting this addition on this historic building because unlike other historic buildings, this building is very simple in its character and its quality, and we have taken a step even beyond that with respect to the simplicity of the massing of that additional, of that addition in this pavilion, and that's why we see the great care of the choice of material and also massing. Also, in terms of functions, we have considered that today, any and every time we enter any of these, any of these prominent buildings, the first thing we're confronted with is security. What we have done here in order to mitigate that, we pushed the security apparatus to the side, so the minute you walk into the building, you're really looking at the historic building and at the exhibits, and you turn either right or left to enter the building, so that's kind of somewhat out of the way. We've also guided, we're also guided by constructability and sustainability, and that is partially why we looked into, we've analyzed and we've considered various designs for that pavilions, being all transparent and partially transparent or translucent, as you have seen. And we have considered aspects of sustainability with respect to energy savings and so on, and that is partially why part of the building is opaque, but it, from aesthetics point of view, it also frames that entrance and focus really that experience of the visitors more to the central aspect of the, of the historic building. And lastly, in terms of historic preservation and highlighting two of the major aspects of that, of the historic building. First, which you probably have seen from, of the slides, is the base of the building with the three doors. That is a very important feature of the historic buildings, and rising above that is the very simple vertical and the four columns. What we've attempted to do, and that is partially why the central part of the pavilion is raised, because we wanted to make sure that we are highlighting the important aspects of the building in terms of controlling that view with the clear glass up at the top. And also, with respect to the structure, there is a portion of the building in the basement where we are not able to penetrate columns within that area, and that is partially why the, that raised portion is resting on the pavilion on one hand, which is an independent structure, and the parapet. And interesting enough, by doing that, you're able to appreciate the entire facade with the three doors by resting on top of that parapet as opposed to interrupting it. So all those four reasons that I've just mentioned guided our design to reach this conclusion after studying many, many other options. But in the end, we are at a concept phase. We are obviously always open to suggestions, and we have always been guided with the input from the commissions, and we will continue to do that, and as we continue to meet with the staff, we will be able to come to a conclusion with all this, but I appreciate the opportunity for allowing me to clarify those points.
Thank you very much. Is there further discussion and comments? Hearing none, is there a motion? Concept design, EDR?
I would move the EDR.
It's been moved and seconded that the concept design for the U.S. Diplomacy Center be approved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? The ayes have it. Thank you very much, Ms. Hirsch. That ends today's commission meeting. Is there anything else to come before us for the good of the order? Hearing none, thank you very much for your attendance today. We are adjourned.